Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Mrs. Quigley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your agenda is in order and ready for approval.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your second item is to receive the General Manager's report. And it is with mixed emotions I share with you that Tracy Bauer has accepted a position with the City of Henderson with a title of Senior Director of Public Affairs Economic and Cultural Development. It's a great opportunity for her personally and professionally. Her appointment will be considered by the Henderson City Council next week, and if approved, she'll join the City of Henderson early in August. She's been with us for six years and has helped craft a stellar reputation for our organization in terms of competency, transparency, and responsiveness. So, we are very excited for her, but we are sad for our loss. But we know that Southern Nevada as a whole will be better because of her leadership and her ability. So, we send her off with the best wishes and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Tell Mr. Snow that's it now. No, but very good luck. It's our loss, but their gain. But in the long run, I think you set a standard for not just PIOs, but for people that embrace the openness of the general public. And I think that's been the key piece. So, keep up your good work, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the name that shall not be mentioned. This, I guess, the city, the new city manager on Henderson had something to do with this hiring. I don't know if we have the ability to do any kind of investigative work, but it's got to be a cooling-off period before he comes.
Oh, that would be nice.
You make sure that this is a regional agency. He has that little city out there in the southeast, which by coincidence, I had my gavel ready about the representative. Tracy, congratulations. Tina said it's a great, great opportunity for you as far as what you've done in your career thus far and what this will enable you to do in the future. You've been not only a welcome addition here, you've been a great asset to the organization, and we thank you.
We do thank you, and we look forward to continuing with the same themes that you've taught us as you've been here with transparency, responsiveness, and competency. So, thank you. Your next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report, and Director Susan Martinovich is not able to be with us today, but she did ask me to share with you that the state, through their recruitment process to replace her, has narrowed the applicant pool down to six, and they will be interviewing those six applicants at their board meeting on the 23rd. So, we will know shortly who her replacement will be, and we look forward to meeting and working with that new person.
If I may, Tina?
Yes.
Rudy, would you mind giving a quick update on the '95 Summerlin Parkway, if you have that, as far as closure, timeframes? Are we still looking at November? Did I catch you off-guard?
I think they're doing the elevated right now. Are you talking about the? There's two projects there. For the record, Rudy Melfibon, Deputy Director for Southern Nevada for NDOT. Two projects there. The HOV Flyover Bridge obviously is completed and will be open shortly, but the open graded paving, that final one-inch layer of paving is continuing at night right now, and a lot of the work on the structures were delayed up there by Anne Road at that interchange. So, that's going to be a little bit later in the year, but we are trying to get the paving done, the final lift of paving done on the lanes.
Are we optimistic that by calendar year's end, the project will pretty much be substantial?
Yes, it will be done by the end of the year.
Are you going to be able to work on it? Shelby?
I'll be with you.
Thank you.
That's my commute home, so.
Thank you, Tina.
Your next item is to conduct your first comment period for citizens' participation.
Do I have any cards? This is the designated portion of our agenda where the public can speak to agenda items posted on today's RTC agenda, specifically to agendas, agenda items posted. Seeing and hea-- oh.
Good morning again. Patricia Anderson. I am not going to hold up the fact that breaking, bringing up the yards, breaking up the yards, I don't think is a good idea. Number two, I think that you need to respect your drivers a little bit more because you have great drivers. And the recovery time, as we talked before, one-on-one, the recovery time they need to be because the Charleston and Sahara Express, it goes all the way up to Red Rock. And the people feel that the, as far as the Sahara Bus is concerned, they feel that it's a free bus. It's not a free bus.
Okay, Patricia.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate the comments, but those are more appropriate at the end in the second comment period.
Yeah, right, okay.
This is specific, but thank you.
Okay, right.
And we'll hear from you later.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing and hearing from no one else, we'll close that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on your agenda is the consent agenda made up of items five through 31 and may be taken with one motion.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 32 will be handled by Assistant General Manager Dr. Fred O'Haney.
Item 32, to approve NDOT's fiscal year 2013 annual work program for Clark County projects. The chairman of NDOT has developed its annual work program for fiscal year 2013. The project includes construction projects that NDOT intends to take, as well as major maintenance projects during the fiscal year 2013. Mr. Rudy Melfibon, who is the Deputy Director of NDOT, is here to give a brief presentation of their work program.
Thank you, Fred. For the record again, my name is Rudy Melfibon, Deputy Director for Southern Nevada for the Nevada Department of Transportation. And every year, we go around to every county in the state of Nevada to explain our annual work program, some of the midterm goals and long-term goals as far as our projects and programs. We do, since the RTC of Southern Nevada is such a large metropolitan planning organization, we're constantly doing this process of coordinating our projects and programs with the RTC and with the member entities, Clark County and the cities here in Southern Nevada. Part of the process is requesting the annual work program approval, which goes into our planning document for our transportation projects. So, that's the purpose of my meeting today. One of the things I wanted to do is introduce who's in the audience attending today. Kim Wallen, who is our State Controller. She's one of the few board members of our Transportation Board that actually attends some of these. She goes out to several of these a year and kind of learns as a board member what NDOT is doing in some of the rural communities by talking to county commissioners and observing some of these presentations. So, we appreciate her coming along today. Also, Tracy Larkin-Thomason, who is our Assistant Director of Planning, is here. Dennis Taylor, who's in charge of Multimodal Planning Division. Tony Letizia and Melvin McCallum are from our planning group down here in Las Vegas. It's nice to have offices with the RTC. Colocation really helps us to be more efficient in the planning function. Our partners from Federal Highways Administration are here. Paul Schneider, who's the Assistant Division Administrator in Carson City, and Leah Serman, who's in charge of planning for the Division Office in Carson City. Director Martinovich sends her regrets. She's actually still in Colorado City, attending the Washito Conference, which is just wrapping up this morning. As was mentioned by Tina Quigley, there is an exciting time at NDOT with, we hate to see Susan retire on September 5th, but it does open up the opportunity for a new director to come in and see what he or she wants to change at NDOT. And I think that one thing that won't change is the working relationship with the RTC of Southern Nevada. It's always been great, and especially with the member entities as well. Some of the things that we will be putting more attention on at NDOT and working with the locals and local public agencies, improving the agreement process, I think, needs to be done so that we can kind of shorten that timeframe for our project agreements and streamline that effort. Thank you. Standing O. The other things that we do is, in my role as Head of Civil Rights, I have Yvonne Schuman, who's a civil rights officer that works in the offices at RTC, and we'll be doing some things, coordinating with the locals on Title VI program and some of the outreach efforts to the public. Also, the ADA program is going to be ramped up at NDOT. So, we'll actually probably be learning more from the locals in that respect because we're kind of behind the curve on that ADA program. A couple of other points before I talk about the annual work program. The, NDOT is still focused on safety. We have the Zero Fatalities Program, and a lot of people question, isn't that a little bit, you know, unachievable, zero fatalities? We feel that by personalizing it and having an ad campaign that focuses on, at a personal level, it brings more attention. And what we do is ask people, what would be the goal for fatalities in your family? And they all say zero. So, we try to make that a personal point in our message. Unfortunately, here in Clark County, we're up quite a bit in the amount of fatals on our state and local highways and roads. The last count was 37 over a year ago at this time. That's very unfortunate and tragic. We want to work on those numbers and drive them in the other direction. Statewide, we're up about five fatals from this, in comparison with this time last year. The big news is obviously the passage of MAP 21, which is the reauthorization of the transportation bill. It's for 27 months. So, it gives us at least some certainty of how much federal funding that we're going to get. And one of the things that the US DOT has got to do is through Federal Highway Administration and the other transit administrations, the others that receive the funding that flows to the states and to the MPOs, is to give a lot of guidance. So, during the Western States DOT's meeting, Washito meeting earlier this week, they were talking a lot about, they're just finding out this information that's in this hefty bill. But some of the good news is it consolidates a lot of the programs into a smaller number of programs, which gives the states and the MPOs more flexibility, hopefully. So, the projects, programs such as Safe Routes to School are combined with the enhancement program. They're both good programs, but they'll be in one funding category now with some other programs. Another big thing in that transportation bill was the designation of Interstate 11. Nevada and Arizona are teaming up on a study of that corridor. Obviously, we pretty much have our alignment set with Boulder City Bypass Project, and we've been working closely with the RTC of Southern Nevada on the totaling project that's being considered there. NDOT has plans to advertise our first phase of the frontage road and relocating utilities for the Phase 1 of the, of the NDOT portion of the Boulder City Bypass Project, which goes up to Railroad Pass from south of Henderson. The thing with the Interstate 11 designation, we believe that it gives us more leverage to chase federal funding jointly with Arizona. Arizona has a lot to do on their side with working with tribal governments and local governments on establishing that alignment and doing a lot of public meetings. That's a long process, but at least we're further along on the Nevada side, and it'll help us to compete for federal funds. The other thing to mention in the reauthorization was the performance measures requirement by the federal government. Performance measures are not new to NDOT. We've already been collecting a lot of information on bridge condition, pavement condition, fatalities that I had mentioned on our roads. But they are going to ask more about traffic operations and how smooth traffic flows through our system, so that'll be new. We do have an operations performance measure, but we've kind of struggled with trying to find something that is understandable and means something to most people because we don't want something that only engineers, traffic engineers can understand. Although, no knock on traffic engineers.
Certain ones.
No. So, with that, I'm available to answer some questions about any specific programs or projects. Basically, what you have in the annual work program is from the smaller state forces type of work that happens for maintenance of our roads to the larger 3R or overlay, you know, reconstruction projects on some of the main highways such as I-15 or US-93. These are state-funded projects. All the federal-funded projects have to go through the MPO into the tip locally, so you already see those when you approve the tip. But these are the state-funded only. NDOT will be watching our cash flow very closely to make sure that we can deliver these projects. So, some of these might move around a bit. We watch, when we're looking at cash flow, our state fiscal year is to June 30th, whereas the federal fiscal year is to September 30th. So, we just watch to make sure that they align in the correct fiscal year. When we're talking about cash flow on the state-funded, we're looking at the state fiscal year. With that, I'm available to answer questions.
Comments or questions? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. Hi, Rudy.
Hello.
Two questions. Title VI on the civil rights, can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yes. Title VI is non-discrimination. So, what we look at in Title VI is our external programs. There's Title VII, so if you're an employer, you have to do certain things with EEO.
Right, so you're talking subcontractors or generals.
So, it's our contractors, our subcontractors, but also more than that, it's our projects. So, our projects impact communities. We want to look at how we do the outreach to those communities. Are we going through an area of town that has predominantly Spanish-speaking people? Then we want to have some bilingual material at our meetings. We want to have people that can speak Spanish at our meetings so that we can communicate, get people there in advance so that we don't just do the public meeting and say, well, no one showed up, I guess we're okay.
Okay, good. And then, how does that relate, or if it does, to legislation that NDOT supported? I think it was Joe Hogan's legislation to do the tracking on our actual jobs of minority hire, women, Asian-American. NDOT's done a very good job.
Thank you.
I think the local governments need to take a look at that, but is that?
To explain to others what Assemblyman Hogan's program was, was we would meet with our contractors. We get it in our specifications ahead of time. So, on our larger projects, we require our subcontractors, our prime contractor, to sit around the table with NDOT and with advocates from the community to review, what are the hiring opportunities coming up on that construction project? And then we identify, well, we look at the labor statistics for the different union trades, so carpenters, laborers, operating engineers and such. And when there's hiring opportunities, we try to get the contractors aware that we want to get those numbers up for women, for African-Americans. Typically, Hispanics are not an issue in certain construction trades, but we want to look at Asians and look at these specific ethnic groups that are underrepresented compared to the population numbers in the region so that we try to impress on the contractor, we need to improve these numbers. They work with the unions and often through their apprenticeship programs that are available that the unions have set up and are ongoing that are approved. So, we try to get more hiring of minorities and women on these projects. It helps the contractors achieve their EEO goals, which are just a part of meeting the federal laws for non-discrimination. So, it's a very good program. We're putting it on the F Street Bridge Project on I-15 and also on the Cactus Interchange Projects that continue that.
Excellent. And maybe we could work with our local public works directors to see if we can look at something like that because it really does broaden the hiring opportunities of local as well as women and minorities that are underserved currently. Third question is on SNAP. Is that, do you oversee that part, that transitioning on the voice and radio analog? Is, what is NDOT on now for your radio wave?
NDOT currently is working with the Department of Public Safety, with the other emergency responders to try to get a uniform system.
One talking.
There's a lot of work to do still on several mountaintops around the state to get those radio towers and get the equipment in there. We are on a certain track to, working with DPS and the others to try to get that work done. Still a lot of work to do. I would say that we're probably a year away from completing a lot of our work, but we have our radio technicians now working directly for headquarters, shifted them to the operations side where the radio communications is very important. So, we'll continue to do that. We'll provide an update to you on where we're at on that program.
Okay, great. Because I know that we have an agenda item for RTC's transition on the SNAP, and we just need to make sure that our public safety folks, which includes NDOT, can communicate no matter where they're at because then sometimes you can get into dire straits. And you're right, those mountaintop receivers were not available sometimes. I even still remember hearing from Highway Patrol that they go to dead zones. So, I just, I noticed that we have that on the transition. I just wasn't, I couldn't remember if you guys, if we moved you to the gigawatt 815s back in the, I don't remember anymore in the legislature, but I remember trying to learn more about analog versus whatever. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Tobler?
Yes, thank you. Since the I-11 was brought up, I want to just thank the RTC and NDOT for holding the public meeting out in Boulder City. I think it was well-attended, and you guys did a great job at answering the questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Tarkanian?
And I wanted to thank NDOT for the number of times and the empathetic ways in which they met with members of the community going over the NEON project, which I think has been there almost forever going on. But in any case, I will tell you that there has been a decided improvement, the feeling of the residents in NDOT's reaching out to them, and I think you did a very good job.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I know that when we started that project, Jacob Snow had hair, but, you know, he saw what happened there. But we do pride ourselves in doing a lot of the outreach, and we do also appreciate you coming forward on behalf of your constituents and several other members of elected officials that are represented in that area because that helps us to focus in on some of the neighborhood groups and individuals that need some answers on something, such as, you mentioned, this project takes a long time. We have started purchasing a lot of the right-of-way. People sometimes don't agree on what the value of their property is, and we have to end up in negotiations and sometimes, unfortunately, in court. So, we are proceeding and going with the right-of-way acquisition, and hopefully, we're talking to our board about the possibility of public-private partnership to advance at least the first phases of that project.
Thank you. Rudy, certainly carrying up on Councilwoman Tarkanian's comment, what I've seen over the last five, six, seven years, certainly Director Martinovich, but also you here in the South, you've become a true partner with the RTC. And when I was first on this board, the same relationship and the same feeling was not there. There was a lot of disagreement over policy, disagreement over projects, but over the past few years, it's been unbelievable as far as the MPO and NDOT truly becoming a partner in Southern Nevada. And I would hope, I hope the new director, he or she, continues that partnership, critically important to us. NDOT is such an important part in what we're hoped to accomplish over the next decade. So, I would certainly pass that on in our thanks for what you have done personally and certainly what Susan has done. I-11, I'm going to take 30 seconds to pop off about I-11. This is an opportunity that if we don't start doing things today, certainly long-term planning, but simply not the Boulder City Bypass, what this could do for Southern Nevada as far as manufacturing, warehousing, we could become truly the critical turning point. We could take, if this new port gets done, the seaport down in Mexico, we're going to have so much activity coming up this I-11. And I know Arizona, especially in the Phoenix area, has had a jumpstart on us. They've involved the business community, community leaders, elected officials, state government. They have, again, the lead. What I don't want to happen is they're getting out so far in front of us that as these federal dollars start to become available, Arizona gets the lion's share of that money. So, I would encourage not only the RTC but NDOT to start thinking long-term, and certainly Boulder City is the critical component, but then we have the highway coming in from Boulder City. We have the spaghetti bowl. We have people moving up I-15. All these things, and certainly that transportation infrastructure impact on the land use out in that area, this is an opportunity that could be of tremendous benefit. I think possibly, from an economic standpoint, the most impact in Southern Nevada outside the gaming industry, certainly in my 30 years in town, if we take advantage of it. So, I would just, certainly our board and NDOT, we need to be far more aggressive on the front end, planning the opportunities today. If we don't, I think we're going to miss a great opportunity. And that was brought to you by, Councilman Ross.
Well, I just want to add to that, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, there's been discussion about the Las Vegas Valley actually being an inland port, whether it's U.S. Customs or anything like that. Out, as you look out my window at City Hall, I see the trains go by, and that's exactly what they're doing. They're going by. They're not stopping here. There's none. We've lost that railroad yard, and I think we start having these conversations about Interstate 11, I-11, the connectivity from Mexico through the Southland head north, whether it's up US-95 or up I-15, it really doesn't matter. But I think there are golden opportunities, and it's incumbent that we, as a Regional Transportation Commission, and Rudy, you as NDOT, are cognizant of that, and I echo his sentiments. Let's not let this slip between our fingers. Let's collectively work together and look towards tomorrow. And I know next month's meeting is going to be very good because you've got some wonderful people coming, Ms. Quigley, to talk about some great things that we need to be aware of and we need to stay on top of. So, I just wanted to add that to this conversation, and I want all of us to be cognizant of that opportunity to be that inland port for generations to come.
And it's coming through, certainly Clark County, but the City of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, coming through Boulder City, Mesquite. And this has, if there was ever a potential impact on all of us as a true regional board, this is it. So, you have your marching orders. Rudy, Tina, let's go.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll follow up on Councilman Ross's comments. Yes, after having briefings with each of you this last month, we got feedback that you would like to learn more about what's going on with I-11, Desert Express, even the monorail as it comes out of bankruptcy, our recent Regional Rapid Transit Authority Committee findings. So, at next meeting, we will bring those speakers to you so that we can kind of start to learn about what's going on regionally and seek your direction.
Thank you. And also, a special welcome to our distinguished guests. We appreciate you joining us this morning.
The chairman's staff is asking for approval.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. And in closing, I'd like to also express my appreciation for Tracy Bauer. I think that her and her group here at RTC really set the bar for everybody, all the public agencies here, I think even some private groups. I think that we're, just want to wish you well, wish you the best.
Rudy, don't push it.
And don't, I'm just trying to make sure that you don't steal any people from us.
We're trying to, on the screen today, we're trying to digitally enhance so they don't see her face there. Thank you for the kind words. Tina?
Mr. Chairman, item number 33 is to receive a report and approve the proposed commuter bus service from the downtown Las Vegas area to the Veterans Affairs Main Hospital. We have a presentation with a few slides for you to explain the project. This very beautiful and important new addition to Southern Nevada is coming next month, the Veterans Affairs Main Hospital. It is located on Pecos, north of Centennial, near the 215 Beltway, which is currently located outside of our fixed service area. But over the last year, the RTC's been working very closely with the VA, Southern Nevada Healthcare System, to identify possible options to help ensure that veterans and their families have public transportation to the various healthcare facilities. So, we are thrilled that the VA has expressed interest in partnering with us in terms of a financial commitment to assist with a commuter bus service that will provide service as an alternative to fixed route service. So, what the proposal is, is using CMAC money, CMAC grant funds, which stands for the congestion mitigation and air quality grants, combined with assistance from the VA to launch a commuter bus service, like we said, between downtown and the new hospital. This route will provide service to all This route will provide service to all transit riders, not just veterans, between those two facilities with just six additional residential stops along the route. So it is not a true fixed route, a standard fixed route service. It is a commuter service, also called a feeder service, because it feeds service between two main facilities. Those proposed stops that we're talking about, the six stops, are the BTC, Fourth and Carson, Craig and Losi, Washburn and Losi, Anne and Losi, Centennial Hills and Losi, and the VA Hospital itself. It's about a 35-minute ride each way. The service is proposed to operate seven days a week between 5:00 a.m. and midnight. And the proposed launch date for this commuter bus service will coincide with the opening of the VA Main Hospital, which is scheduled from next August. Now, this map here is actually a great segue to your next presentation by Director of Transit Services Sandra Stanko. What it shows is that thin red line, that squiggly line, is our existing paratransit service boundary. And the teal line you see is this new route, this new commuter bus route that we're showing. And you can see that portions of it lie outside of the existing paratransit boundary. So we will be partnering with different volunteer and nonprofit organizations to make sure we are providing paratransit service to this hospital in portions where the route falls outside of it. Our vehicles, though, that'll be operating on this route will be capable of handling paratransit, the needs of paratransit customers. So with that, I'd also like to introduce to you Mr. John Bright, who is the VA Southern Nevada Healthcare System Medical Center Director. He's been a great partner and is working very closely with staff to ensure that our veterans and military families have transportation to all of their medical facilities. And he'd like to say a few words today.
Good morning. For the record, my name is John Bright. I'm the Director of VA Southern Nevada Healthcare System, at least through the end of this month. We are very excited. We're going to have our dedication to the new medical center at Pecos in 215. The dedication will be August 6. And we will begin to see our first patient on August 14. The VA in Las Vegas currently treats approximately 46,000 veterans. We have 64,000 veterans that are enrolled in our system. And we estimate that approximately 10% to 12% of those veterans utilize public transit. This is a comprehensive medical center. It will be full service 24/7, seven days a week. It's probably easier to tell you what services will not be available. And there are basically just two. We will not, at least initially, do open heart surgery. And we will not do radiation oncology. It's more convenient to veterans, and it's more cost-efficient to continue to do that with community partnerships. So it will be a phased opening beginning on the 14th of August, and we will probably be fully functioning no later than the middle of December. So it's a very aggressive schedule. We accepted the building April the 1st. We're now moving in staff and equipment. We also estimate that about 5% to 6% of our staff also use public transit. So this is a very good service. We've worked very closely with RTC. We've worked with them to get grants, and we're still looking for additional avenues to help with funding. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? The reference to "for at least 30 more days"?
Well, we'll see how the dedication and the opening goes.
Well, there's a new Public Information Communication Officer out in Henderson. You may want to tap into that.
We will also have, and they are now open, we also have four clinics that are predominantly primary care. One is at Buffalo and Warm Springs. Another one is at Boulder Highway and Race Track. One is at Rancho and Alexander. And the northeast clinic is at Charleston and Lamb. And RTC is working closely with us to make sure that our veterans can get there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. What you do for the veterans is greatly appreciated.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that was a request to receive the report and approve the proposed commuter bus service.
Motion on the floor for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Item number 34 will be handled by Sandra Stanko.
Thank you, Tina. Item 34, to approve the list of proposed projects for New Freedom and Job Access and Reverse Commute Funding in the amount of $573,670 for New Freedom projects and $850,308 for JARK projects for a total of $1,423,978. I have to tell you, this is one of my favorite agenda items, because we are very committed to improving mobility management and being able to work with other nonprofit providers to achieve that goal. I'm going to just kind of highlight a couple of things. As Tina mentioned, the red line on this map, and it's somewhat difficult to see, actually represents the paratransit service area. The color sections represent the nonprofits that we have worked with that are providing service to the community. And really, we have partnered with pretty much, well, several nonprofits, actually nine of them, and were able to actually provide service for the entire Las Vegas Valley, including areas outside of our ADA paratransit service. We've been working on this now for three years, and the different providers actually have their own policies and procedures on who can ride, but the majority of them are providing service for persons with disabilities and senior citizens. The funding that we use, the JARK and New Freedom pays for 50% of the operating cost. So the nonprofits are also contributing 50% of the cost to provide the service. I'm just going to go over a couple of programs that are listed. Linda Hand is in Boulder City. We're really proud of the partnership that we have with Linda Hand. It is truly a volunteer-based program. They're picking up residents in Boulder City and bringing them to medical appointments in Las Vegas Valley. Tremendous need for that service, and again, it's strictly 100% volunteer-based. Next, I'd like to introduce, and she's been before us a couple of times, Fran Smith, the Executive Director with ITN. ITN is truly a great partner. Wonderful things are happening in the city of Henderson. And Fran's just going to provide a quick update on some of those happenings.
Thanks, Sandy. Thank you very much. I have a table here that I want to make available to the commissioners, because it shows our growth over the two years since we've been on the road. The past two months, we have delivered over 2,200 rides, starting at two the first month we operated. I want to emphasize that while we may be operating this program, it would not be possible without all the support we've had from New Freedom Funds and with the RTC. And our operation is truly a partnership that is probably one of the best partnerships I've been involved with between ITN and RTC to really expand the community's ability to meet the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities. You may notice on the bottom of the table, we have now delivered more than 18,000 rides. And we're already talking about our 25,000th ride celebration, which we think will probably be this fall. And we will eagerly invite all of you to be part of that celebration. Thank you to the RTC for making what we do possible.
And thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Next, I would like to introduce Dana Sarada. She's the Executive Director with Helping Hands of Las Vegas Valley to explain a little bit about their coordinated transportation program.
Good morning. I'd also like to introduce Marsha Blake. She's with James Sestrand Helping Hands of North Las Vegas. And the New Freedom funding and the partnership that we have with RTC has made it possible for us to come together and actually consolidate some of our transportation services so that we can expand and increase our capacity to serve seniors and disabled in our community, primarily in areas in Summerlin and in North Las Vegas and up towards Aliante and northeast and to the far west, where they're not being able to be served by the RTC's fixed route or paratransit. So we just want to thank you all for your support of this project. And we're looking forward to working with the Nevada Adult Day Healthcare Centers to also further help us to consolidate by being our call center for all the seniors in our community to access our services. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Also, next-
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yes.
Commissioner June Kiliani?
So I'm the Nevada Adult Day Care Centers. It's a for-profit program. Does that qualify for our grant?
The adult daycare portion is a for-profit, but they actually operate a nonprofit also.
Okay, because on our documentation, it just lists for-profit?
We have a copy of their 501(c)(3).
Is it an IRS fire 501(c)(3), or is it one of the State of Nevada 6,700-plus 501(c)(3)'s?
It's the IRS.
Okay. And then is, okay, so the portion that they get, the grant money, is for the nonprofit portion, not for the for-profit?
That is correct.
And who heads up that organization?
Chris Vito.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Chris Vito.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Next, an exciting project that really is maximizing resources is the partnership with Southern Nevada Transit Coalition and the Jewish Federation. What's happening is we have seniors in Laughlin that are coming in to Henderson. They're picking up residents in Henderson and taking them to programs at the Jewish Federation and also for medical appointments. So instead of the vehicle coming to Laughlin, again, it's just very coordinated with the other nonprofit. And that has been a tremendous, a great partnership. A couple of other programs that the Jewish Federation that are on the list of projects for approval is a taxi voucher program. This is covering, again, some of the service area in the northwest, where, outside of the paratransit area, that $40 worth of taxi coupons are available for them to take trips for medical and some social service agencies and other related type of appointments. In addition, they provide a weekly nutrition program. So if there's an interest in participating in the weekly nutrition program, the funding is bringing folks in for that program and also for weekly shopping trips. This is really probably the success story. If you look at this slide, pretty much over the past three years, in 2010, we provided around 130,000 paratransit trips. 2011, it was a little over a million trips. 2012, almost 1.2 million trips. With the JARK and New Freedom, we have actually provided over 750,000 trips in the past three years, really ramping up last year around 433,000 trips. So our nonprofit providers have really made a big difference, giving more transportation options for seniors and persons with disabilities. And what that really means in addition, too, is that we have been able to really, again, maximize resources, look to other providers to help meet some of the needs. Not all the trips would be on paratransit, but a high percentage of these trips would be paratransit eligible. And that could actually result in a cost savings to us of over $1.5 million. Oh, I'm sorry. Over $11 million. That's the next slide. In the three-year period. So we started out with a little over $2.7 million in 2010 in savings. 2011, it was about $7 million. And then last year, with the increase in trips provided by our nonprofit providers, we were actually looking at probably an $11 million cost savings for the RTC. Staff does recommend approval of the project for New Freedom and JARK funding, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. And just back to that one, I think you should probably designate or indicate on there, it's a for-profit company for the purposes of the grant, though they are using their nonprofit sector. So it's clear for folks. Second thing is, you mentioned Jewish Federation, and they do a really good job of senior outreach that we would not normally, or these other nonprofits would not normally pick up. Do you know if any of these nonprofits will then apply for CB, do they qualify for CBDG grants in addition?
Many of the nonprofits have applied for the Community Development Block Grant and also funding through the Division of Aging Services.
Okay. And do we monitor to make sure, just because they can ask, is it really necessary? Are they actually expanding service, or is it just asking for grants wherever they can get asked for grants? And do we wind up subsidizing where maybe we could direct those dollars more?
Really, it's very clear that you cannot double-dip. So the dollars that they receive from the Division or some other sources are separate from the program that we're providing. And we're actually receiving information specifically on the trips provided using these funds.
Okay. And then the taxi cab $40 coupons, refresh my memory, because it's been that way for 25, 30 years.
Right. That's true.
And taxi costs have gone up. So I'm wondering if that is a conversation that's occurred legislatively or through Division of Aging?
It is definitely through Division of Aging, and that dollar amount has not changed for several years. You are correct. And I think it just comes down to funding. The difference here is that the $40, it's the senior ride taxi voucher program with the Division, the senior pays half. So if you get a coupon book for $20, they pay 10. In this particular case, using the New Freedom, the senior is not paying anything. So they receive the $40. What they need to do is provide proof that they used the taxi coupons for a medical purpose or a social service activity. And then the following month, they can get another $40.
Okay, I was going to ask. And then, so they can then apply for another month?
That's correct.
Is there a restriction on the number of months?
No, there's no restriction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Ross?
I just have to read this, Mr. Chairman. This is the "New Freedom and Job Access Reverse Commute Funding." Who makes these things up?
I know. It's a mouthful to say, too. We refer to it as JARK.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Golly, can we be any more bureaucratic?
Sandy, since we're giving out kudos today, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you. There is no one more passionate about what they do than you and this program. And certainly, tens of thousands of seniors are benefiting. And thank you.
Thank you very much. I do really enjoy this part of the job. So, thank you.
Entertain a motion. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Items number 35 and 36 will be handled by Assistant General Manager Jerry Keating.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item 35 is to receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute 288.153, related to the collective bargaining agreement between the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada and the Service Employees International Union Local 1107, effective July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2017. And this will be for your possible action in the following item. On May 24, the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada and the Service Employees International Union Local 1107 reached a tentative agreement covering fiscal years 2013 through 2017. In this agreement, 33 articles were amended, four appendices were amended, four appendices were deleted, seven memoranda of understanding were deleted, and one memorandum of understanding was added. Attachment 1 of your backup contains the proposed agreement, which includes changed and new language in its entirety. Article 2 is a summary of article changes with a brief description of each article. Article 3 is the fiscal assessment summary, which outlines by article which elements of the contract were changed or unchanged and had a fiscal impact and did not have a fiscal impact. And Article 4 of the fiscal impact summary, which outlines total and annual contract costs and/or savings of the new agreement. Prior to the public hearing, I'd like to make a brief presentation. Before doing so, I would like to thank the members of SEIU and the RTC bargaining teams, who I think did an outstanding job during this collective bargaining session. We entered into this collective bargaining agreement with a new thought process and a new paradigm as it resulted in collective bargaining agreements. We decided to work with the Federal Mediation Conciliation Service, Kevin Hawkins of the local office, and to try to build a team that would work based on trust and respect at the table. the table. Through that process, I can say that we accomplished a tremendous amount of trust and respect and cooperation with both sides of the table. Again, as we entered into collective bargaining, we understood the fiscal impact that this valley was undertaking. We did not enter into this collective bargaining agreement lightly. We knew that we had to come up with something that was going to be fiscally responsible and fiscally viable for the continued operations of the Regional Transportation Commission. We were faced with trying to negotiate a contract that we thought was going to be fiscally responsible or go to arbitration and risk even more financial li...or put more financial liability on the RTC. We understand going to arbitration, that there are two points that arbitrators generally look at. The first is the ability to pay. The RTC, over the last two years, based on our funding mechanism, which is generally sales tax, has received an increase in sales tax over the last two fiscal years. The other issue an arbitrator's gonna look at is what's happening economically with the local jurisdictions around you. In trying to balance both of those, we were faced with a risk. Do we try to settle something that is going to be beneficial and keep the continued operation of the RTC fiscally responsible to this valley? Or do we go to arbitration and have a third party decide what's the best interest for the, the RTC and what's the best interest for its employees? The first year of this contract, we end up with a .72% reduction in costs. It may look like our employees in this contract, the way it's written, may be receiving a salary increase. Please keep in mind that there were benefits in this contract that our employees did give up, that were substantial savings to the RTC, not only now, but in the future. Over the last three years, our employees came to us and gave up guaranteed contractual colas. They understood the pain our riders were seeing and by doing so, they decided that they were going to give up their colas and help us out in the financial difficult times that we had. The one thing that I find very refreshing about this contract is that it is a contract that we believe is economically driven. There are no subjective numbers in this contract. If economic times are good in this valley and the RTC sees increases in sales tax, our employees will see the benefits. When economic times are bad and we are not seeing the sales tax increase that we need to not only maintain our existing service, but to build a better service, our employees will take the suffering as well and they've agreed to that. Over the next couple of slides, I just want to go over it with you. It is potentially a five-year agreement. There is no cola that will be given to our employees in 2012 and when we do give a cola in 2013, in July of 2013, it will be based on the three-year average of the Consumer Price Index, as established by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which basically ends up being the rate of inflation. The reason we went with the three-year average is that it gives some stability to an organization when we're budgeting, but it also gives some stability to our employees to understand that they're not gonna see the spikes that may or may not occur based on the CPI in that respective year. Next slide, please. We are gonna have some merit adjustments. What was agreed to was effective July 1, 2013. Our merit evaluation system has changed. In the past, our employees were eligible for raises that were either 3%, 4%, or 5%. What we've done this year is we've come up with a system where employees are either proficient or non-proficient. If you receive a proficient rating, you will get whatever the sales tax generates in regards to a percentage for your merit sal...for your merit adjustment. In addition to that, if employees during the course of the year receive any discipline, they will not be entitled to a merit adjustment. If they receive two non-proficient ratings, they will not be entitled to a merit adjustment either. Next slide. This will show you how we have economically tied this contract to the continued economics within our valley. If, if the RTC has to show a 3.49% increase or greater for our employees to receive merit adjustments. The reason we chose 3.49 was because that ensured this agency maintained the $10 million balance that we need in an effort to enhance our capital improvement programs. In addition to that, the numbers included in there are for monies and funds that enhance our existing transit service. Once that money is attained, then we would move on to merit adjustments based on salary tax increases year over year. So, for instance, I will look at this, this last fiscal year. Over the last fiscal year, sales taxes increased somewhere around 5 and 1/4%, maybe a little bit longer. With that, our employees may be eligible for a 3.5% increase because we have exceeded the 3 and 1/2% needed for us to enhance our service. Next slide. We also had some provisions in our sick leave changes. In the past, our collective bargaining agreement allowed for employees at the age, at the year of, I'm sorry, allowed our employees at 30 years of employment to cash out 100% of their sick leave at their existing rate of pay. What we chose to do was to take our FLSA-exempt employees and to freeze their, their sick leave today, as of Jan...July 1, at their current rate of pay. That funding and that sick leave balance is then put into an account that they will be cashed out of when they leave the RTC, whatever, whenever they leave the RTC. So, they're not cashed out 100% of their sick leave at the 30th year. They're cashed out at whatever percentage they receive today, based on today's salary dollars. FLSA-exempt employees will be put on the same short-term disability plan that your managers are put on and there are provisions in there that cover abuse and/or neglect of the sick leave system. Next slide. We are really happy to say that we are the first agency in the valley that has ties to the SEIU that has established a change in the longevity article that has been long established past practice, as far back as I can remember, to 1986, within this valley. At the current time, longevity payment increases will be suspended for a period of 12 months. They will be frozen for all intent and purposes, just like that of Clark County's, with a snapback provision in 2013. However, the big change for us is employees hired on or after January 1, 2013, they will only receive a .3%, .30% of 1% as opposed to the existing .57% that current employees get. We feel that we came up with almost a half a percent or a half a cut longevity in half of its previous formula. Next one. The estimated, the estimated cost savings over five years, as you could see, will result in about 170, let me see, $118,000 in savings this year, potentially $1.2 million. But that does not include, what, what we've shared with you is the sick leave savings that we've occurred, that we've accrued are $128,000 per year for the next 18 years and we figured it over an 18-year period because that's what the average per employee stays. If you take that $128,000 savings that we are experiencing, that equates to $2.3 million fiscal savings for this agency. With that being said, I am open to any questions that the board has. Or the public hearing, I'm sorry, public hearing first.
Let me first open up the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this agenda item. Mr. Martinez?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members of the RTC of Southern Nevada. I'm Al Martinez, President of SEIU Nevada Local 1107. Uh, I want to point out that I do want to thank Mr. Keating for the work that he did with our bargaining team. And you're, you're exactly correct. It was very refreshing. I attended some of those bargaining teams and I saw different things there that I planned to incorporate with UMC and Clark County. It was just a different layout and I think there was a sense of trust, something that's really hard in bargaining. But I do want to point that this was the first contract for RTC. Maybe we should always renew, have new people in, in our other bargaining teams, but I think that was a real important component. Uh, I do, uh, thank you, Jeff, for your bargaining team for working with our bargaining team, which are members, working for members, and they did an excellent job of holding their thoughts and being open-minded to a lot of things that were proposed. I would say to you that, like any bargaining, there's, there are differences of opinions, there are disagreements, but there were no impasse. And people walked away feeling good about, nobody was really angry at each other, but we came back to the table and we had different perspectives to see how we could see things differently based on what we've seen in other bargaining units, including Clark County and UMC Hospital. But I would say too, that this bargaining set up a precedent and it set up a model example based on the reports from the Federal Mediation Conciliation Services. They thought it was outstanding. Uh, I think the process was intact. It was not compromised. And we hope to use some of those pieces moving forward with all our public bargaining teams because it worked really well. And this has proved that collective bargaining does work. And I would say to you that, at the end of the day, both sides won, the members won, and especially the community of the RTC shares. So, again, I applaud our bargaining team, which they worked really hard. And the side from Mr. Keating's, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board on this agenda item? Comments or questions from the board? Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keating, go back to your slides there on, on raises. I mean, this, we're, we're gonna give the employees a raise.
The employees, Commissioner or Councilman, basically, yes, the employees will get a raise based on the rate of inflation as established by the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Okay. And I want to thank your team too, Al, for working so closely, SEIU members, the team, for working so closely with, with Jerry, 'cause we had a couple of conversations during that process and appreciate you keeping me up to speed as well. I've, I've had a couple of phone calls from other jurisdictions and other leaders in the community about this contract because as local governments are looking at, as they're negotiating with their collective bargaining groups, they're not getting raises. Um, I think this is a substantial step in the right direction. Um, and, you know, coming from labor myself, you know, I like this, but I'm, I'm having a hard time just philosophically, if you will. We're given raises as the RTC. We're, in the past, we've talked about raising fares, we've talked about cutting services. How is this, how does this look to the public? Now, I like the way this is tied into sales tax because if sales tax goes up, those raises go up essentially, and that's significant to understand. Now, go back to your slide about the savings over the 18, I think it's the last slide. Technology's great. This is a savings to the RTC in the long run. The new employee as well, looking a little different, handling a little different, differently as, in regards to longevity, correct?
Correct. Uh, new employees coming in would still receive longevity at the period of eight years, but instead of at the .57 rate, they would receive it at the .30. So, for all intent and purposes, let's assume I have an employee hired today and they're earning $1,000. I'll just use some rough figures, $1,000. That new employee coming in is gonna earn 600 or closer to $500 as opposed to the 1,000. So, we've significantly made some, what we consider some very big strides in, in longevity. The intent of our team when we went to the table was certainly to get longevity off the, of the table. We know that SEIU bargains with five or six other local jurisdictions in this valley. I was told right from the beginning, as the chief negotiator, that longevity was certainly a hill for them to die for. Uh, and I think they've held that pretty true in all of the other jurisdictions they've been within. We were, we were able to get a compromise from them. The, these are people that I, sometimes we hear that public sector employees are evil employees. These aren't evil employees. These are members of our community that care about the RTC, they care about the fiscal and financial liabilities and viability of the agency as we go forward and they decided that collectively, we would come up with something that shared in the pains and shared in the gains.
Well, look what they've done in the past already. I mean, they've already stepped up to the plate.
Right.
When the recession hit and they understood. And this organization, we couldn't survive without them. We need them. They're dedicated, wonderful employees and Director, I don't have to tell you that. You, you deal with them every day. I am concerned, though, about the message we're sending to the, to the other local governments as well as the public. We're giving a raise essentially, regardless if it's attached to the sales tax or not. And I think even SEIU recognizes that in other collective bargaining units, that longevity thing's going away. I mean, that's just a big problem right now in, in, in the economy. And is it a good thing or is it a bad thing? That's for each individual to make that decision on their own. But we do need to look out for the RTC and its dollars and our reputation in regards to how we, as a policy board, direct the general manager and you and your efforts. Let me ask you this. If this went to arbitration and you didn't get to where you're at today, bringing this toward, to us, if we went to arbitration, what would that cost the RTC?
I believe if we went to arbitration and we looked at the union's proposals that were on the table previously to, to us coming to an agreement, the RTC potentially could lose somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1 million. It would be a million-dollar impact to our salaries and benefits as well as the cost of, of going to arbitration.
And then, on the legal end of this, what would be our chances at the, at the arbitration level?
Uh, you know what? From a legal perspective, it's, it's really difficult because in arbitration, it, it's a crapshoot and everybody understands that. It all depends on which arbitrator you get, what time of day it is. However, based on the fiscal liability, and I'm not basing this solely on the ability to pay issue, but that has to be weighed heavily here. Uh, I, I don't think our chances would be very well, very good at all. And, and arbitration, as we all know, has a grave effect on a lot more things than just the agency in itself. You can look at the school district, for example. They, they just completed arbitration. Not only were they faced with having to lay off 1,000 teachers, they were also faced with having to increase class size, put more kids in a class. So, there's a lot of other domino effects that, that could be affected. We feel that the contract we presented to the board today is, is economically and, and not only economically driven, but a, a reasonable contract for the board to approve. Now, with that said, I understand that every commissioner that sits on this board is from a different local jurisdiction and I understand what's going on in each one of your jurisdictions. As I look at Councilman Illison, I understand what's happening in the city of North Las Vegas. I understand that the city of Henderson just took a 2% cut in pay. Our revenue is generated off of sales tax. The revenue of the other jurisdictions is generated off of other funding mechanisms other than sales tax. With that being said, it's really difficult to take us to arbitration and to, to feel like we're going to win when we've seen gains in sales tax over the last two years. This is a very difficult contract because I understand that if it's approved, it could be precedent-setting throughout the valley and it could have an impact on your jurisdictions. If, if the contracts that are out there by the other local jurisdictions are tied to some type of funding mechanism, whether it be property taxes or sales taxes, I think we can pass the red face test and look at the public and say, "We're not cutting your service. We're increasing your service and our employees are eligible or should be eligible for whatever the cost of living is based on the rate of inflation." They're not asking to make millions of dollars... They're not asking to make millions of dollars in their job, they're just asking to get the same rate of inflation that the rest of the country is getting. I mean, Social Security had their CPI reinstated. You know, it was held up for two years because of the economic situation, but recently, you know, Social Security recipients got their CPI increase. That's all the unions asked for. As far as the merits, you know, when you hire local government employees, you hire them at a range, and the range can be 50,000 to 100,000. If you only give them the rate of inflation and that range never moves, they'll never be able to attain a $100,000 salary. The only way that they can achieve the higher end of that salary is through merit performance raises. And we're saying, and the union is saying, we're willing to do that based on some economic indicator that is a safety for everyone involved. If the RTC gets their 3.5%, which allows them to fully fund their capital grant program and to enhance the current service that they have without coming back to you saying, we need to cut our riders' service, then we'll share in the gain that's been proposed. That's where we're at, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may continue. I love the mechanics of this, I love, Al, what you guys have done, put this all together. Thank you, again, for stepping up to the plate. Thank all of your folks too for being here a few years ago when the economy tanked. I get that part. I want to understand this more, because when I get phone calls like that, it concerns me, and I'd actually like a little more time to vet this, and at least vet this with those other local leaders, so they have an understanding of how this works. And I'm going to use the LVCBA for a minute, some of us have been in that capacity on the LVCBA. The Convention and Visitors Authority receives their money through a room tax, and we don't pay that, our wonderful visitors pay that. So I love the mechanics and how this is based, I think you're absolutely right, but I would like a little more time to digest this entire thing, have those conversations with those other local leaders. Is it going to hurt anything if this is held for 30 days?
No, because right now, there is no fiscal impact to where our employees are getting any raises today. All of our raises have been delayed and postponed, so no, from that perspective, there is no impact, and I do think that if the board so chooses to have us put together a more comprehensive financial layout of this, so to speak, I certainly would be, as well as our finance director, Mark Trossdale, willing to meet with all of you to show you how the Xs and Os come together.
That might be very helpful, and, Mr. Chairman, if I can, with your permission, can Mr. Martinez approach the microphone? I just, a couple of questions for him.
You brought up a good point before I forget, earlier, you know, just to clarify, for the LVCBA group, they did receive raises, and not a whole lot, but they received them, and they also did receive, in the re-opener, bonuses. So, you know, so there are, some folks are getting some raises, not substantially, but they're getting some raises.
But I think the important thing too is, where is that revenue generated from? How does this, how do we function as a government body, as a government function? Same thing with the Convention and Visitors Authority, so I think that helps the public understand where we, how we do this. But I wanted to ask you, has this been, have you had a vote of your members on this yet?
Yeah, our members voted, 87% of our membership was in agreement.
Wow, very good. And are you, do you object at all to holding this for 30 days? And I don't know what the rest of the board is on this, but I'd like some more time to dig into this, and I'd actually like to see the, more numbers, just because of the, all of us are faced with dealing with other collective bargaining units, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a problem if Mr. Keating is so kind, there's that fiscal impact like other municipalities or other groups, but I just want to be clear that, I want to point out to you that, you know, I get calls from my leaders themselves, some of your colleagues, and obviously, there, these are, like you said, different mechanisms, you've got different circumstances, you've got different bargaining teams, it's just different contracts, and I think very often, including the public, tend to put us all in the one boat, so to speak, and we're not. And I think what we just did here was something unique and totally different, it opened my eyes to different perspectives that I want to utilize moving forward with the other bargaining teams, because it was totally different, but at the same time, thank Jerry when you said, public employees are not bad people, or we're making so much money that we're putting everybody in a budget crisis. I would say to you, these are good decent people that really care about their jobs, and that's what in the public service. And I would say to you that they're also the community, they're also taxpayers. But if you need more time, I understand that, I'm not going to oppose that, obviously, I'll defer to Mr. Keating on how he wants to move forward, but I would say to you that, just keep in mind, again, that these are all separate contracts, and another thing I do want to point out, that you're looking at different membership sizes as well, I mean, you're looking at Clark County, we have 1,000 members, or UMC, 1,000 members, and we've got groups here in the hundreds. So keep that in mind, you know, I mean, if you want to compare it to Clark County and RTC, can't do it.
No, I'm not, I'm not even going to go there.
So I just want to be clear on further record, that that's really important to recognize.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, thank you very much, because I don't want to go this direction without your permission or your understanding of where I'm going, especially coming from me, you know that, and you're right. The public doesn't always understand different units of organized labor, certainly from my standpoint at the building trades level. But that's my feeling, I like, I think this is great, I love the mechanics of it, I just want the public to understand exactly how we're doing this, and the press to understand exactly how we're doing this, and I do want to have those other conversations with our other colleagues, so that's my position. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, the RTC has always prided itself on transparency. We don't want the public to feel like this is an underhanded deal or something that's shady. This is a negotiation process that I feel can be equally as transparent. We are more than willing to supply you with all of the numbers, sit down and disclose that with you in an effort to maintain that transparency, like our general manager has prided ourselves on.
Mr. Chairman, could I add to that? Mr. Keating, just the level of integrity of both sides, our side certainly at the RTC and the leadership at the SEIU, that integrity level exists as well, so that's something to be said.
Thank you. Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. Just for the record, I think it's important to note, it's my understanding, and I think Councilman used the term, or maybe Mr. Martinez did, this is the first contract negotiated, because when you formed the RTC, they stayed under the auspices of the county contract, correct?
Yeah, what we did when we left, working with Clark County, we took all of the articles in their entirety, and we followed that contract over the last several years, and this basically is our first negotiation table with our people at the table.
And I think that's very important, because you thought out of the box, both sides did, and so I think the public, and that's fine if we need a little more time to explain numbers and whatnot, because that's part of our responsibility, but I think the public is a winner here, because it showed when you enter negotiations in a win-win mentality, where there's a lose-lose as well on both parts, because nobody ever gets what they want, but where there's that collegiality that comes into play, it betters it for everybody, and it betters the morale and the working conditions that come into play. So in creating your own contract, we have to watch out what happens to our other entities, but every entity has a different pay scale, every entity has a different way of mixing merit and COLA and whatever, so there is no one-stop-shop, and I think this contract actually should give the public pause, and even Mr. Riley in his book, that we did something differently here, and we did it to tie recognition of employment and to the economic measurement. No longer will we give merit just because, I've never been a proponent of merit pay, because it just basically goes to everybody, so what's the point if that's the case? This changes that model and that paradigm, I think. The fact that sick leave, that's a huge cost down the road, and so you have to look at those longer-term. Now, this is a five-year contract, is that correct? Okay, so that's huge, we've never, that I know of, had a five-year contract. What really appealed to me as a former negotiator was the way both the union and the management approached it, and I would hope all of our local governments would take the same lead in having the federal mediation conciliation training start off. When you understand the round rules from day one and the expectations from day one, you will reach an agreement. It doesn't serve the public well, the employees well, or the management well, when you have a constant strife going on. So I would hope that at the county at least, we take a look at something along those lines. I think the other portion of this is that, when times are tough, we asked our employees to step up, and they did. They haven't had a cost of living since '09, there's been no other benefits that have come into play, for this particular organization, but that's across the valley. But when we start to uptick, then, as they share it in the pain, they get to share a little bit in the gain. And the creativity of the merit adjustments, at least, not only with it now having value, you just don't broadly get it, actually ties it to the recognition of the economy, and I think it helps the public understand, the public employees do not function separately. It's, there's a wonderful service that is done, but there's also recognition that they're paid with tax dollars. So in order to pay with tax dollars, you have to have an understanding that there's value to those dollars and how they're generated, and that as taxpayers themselves, they will reinvest those dollars then into the community, and that's something we have to remember. If you want this community to start to come back, people have to have enough discretionary income in order to be able to go buy the new refrigerator, or the, you know, to put their kid through college, or whatever it may be, it's a reinvestment, so it's not just taking tax dollars away. I think the economic tie here is a very key difference, and I think it's something that Tom actually had recommended in his book, so I don't know if we read it or not, but I think it's very key in that way. I think it's a prudent budget, but I do understand wanting some additional numbers, so maybe, maybe part of what you put together is, where were we? Where were your goals for what we got to, and then how does the new numbers fit into what management's goals? I mean, everybody always starts here, but really, what were we looking for, and even what were the employees looking for? And then how, how does this change their makeup from '09 to maybe 2013, is actually before anything would kick in? I think that the other piece, and I stress this myself, I'm amazed that they gave in on the longevity, and I don't mean that in a negative term, I was surprised that you got to that point, and I think that will be a benefit to all of us in the local governments, because it's a finally, it's still a recognition that in many of our jobs, you require degreed people, you require certificates, you require four-year college components in many of our work. Not everybody's just a person that sits at a desk and greets folks, although to me, that's sometimes the most important, bless you. But that said, how do we make sure that that salary is accommodated? And I think longevity, reducing that amount will be a huge savings down the road, and I think it gives us better leverage at the negotiations table from the other jurisdictions. And then finally, could you just remind me, on the CPI West, that then doesn't have us compared nationally, which could skew what a percentage comes in. It looks at our West Coast, Arizona, Idaho, Utah salary for COLA. Did we used to use the national standard? Is that a change or not?
Well, you know, that's kind of amazing, that's a good question, because in the past, I'm not so sure, I don't know what the standard was before. I know that in my 25 years of working in the public sector, we would just come up with percentages. We may look at CPI, but I think we came up with what we thought was economically feasible in collective bargaining. This, if, I may stand corrected on this, but I believe we are the first entity in the valley to actually use CPI as the indicator that will determine what our employees receive. I'm not sure of any other entity in the valley that has done that now or done it in the past. So I think it's really important for us to focus in on CPI not just being a raise that employees get just because they show up to work, it is the Consumer Price Index that is the rate of inflation, that's all it is. It is to keep them up with the same standard of living that they had last year or the year before, and, you know, it's going to be very difficult for these employees or any employees to catch up, because they've gone without their COLA for the last three years. So that's what, how we're tying it to the CPI, and it is the Western region that we're using.
Thank you. And then finally, we've protected our capital fund?
That's why we put the 3.49% in there, not only the capital, but in operational funding for expansion and reallocation of service hours back to our routes on the transit side.
Say that again, so there's no cuts to the routes because of this contract?
Right, based on what we put in there, we know that we're going to be able to sustain the number that we have right now with no cuts. We're hoping that some of the funding we get in will enhance it, because as we go over that 3.49%, we'll have extra funding to enhance it.
So some splits and goes to the routes, some, a portion goes to the employees, but we still have the routes taken care of if we wish to expand, if that's the case. So it's kind of like a pyramid, or probably not a pyramid, but...
No cuts.
That's very key, because we were suffering having to think about that several months ago, as far as that's concerned, so, okay, I will, if there's, I think Councilman made a motion, but we'll see if there's other conversations, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Tobler?
Just a couple of questions. If you bring back numbers, I know on the sheet that you provided to us, it talks about the total fiscal impact cost savings over the five-year period, but years two through five, you don't have the possible salary adjustments in there, and even if you could maybe project to kind of show either two, three, or whatever percentage is coming back, and I think that's what they're referring to as well, just so we have an idea, and even maybe the one that's tied to the sales tax, maybe even have that, at least some estimate for us to kind of see what some of the cost savings, or if there's going to be any after those increases.
And, no problem, Mayor, that's certainly a potential savings, and I'll work with our Director of Finance, Mark Trossdale, and we'll get those numbers to you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Whatever, whoops, whatever numbers come back, it'll be, of course, presented in a public hearing, but it wouldn't hurt to post it on your RTC website or something at some point as you gather that, so the people can peruse it beforehand. Thank you.
Procedurally, if this is held, we could set it up the same way with the public hearing first and then the second agenda item to act?
Yes, you could, for the next, if you're bringing it back for the next meeting, yes, you could do it exactly the same way.
Could the motion be to just keep the public hearing open?
Yeah, just to continue the public hearing.
Just to continue the public hearing, then?
Yes.
Okay. I would make that as a motion, then that way, any information gets posted and the public has information in the meantime.
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to add my compliments to the two sides working on this, because really, they ended up not being two sides, they ended up working together, was very impressive. I think I'm more impressed with the culture and how this group worked together than any other group with which I've worked in similar situations. You've really done an outstanding job. I do think it's worthwhile to take the time to examine it further, so we, as elected representatives, can answer the questions better too. But thank you so much for coming together with the full meaning of supporting the entity itself, not just one side or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple comments and a couple of questions. First and foremost, I don't think it's a surprise, I've told Mr. Martinez this in the past, you have an extremely difficult job with your seven, eight, nine, 12,000 employees in Southern Nevada. It would be wonderful if we could negotiate a contract for all of them, but that just doesn't happen, and we've seen that. But, Al, I have a tremendous respect for you and your ability to adapt to different situations, and as echoing the earlier comments, maybe this does set a new approach to collective bargaining, I hope so. I've heard nothing but great comments from both sides as far as procedurally what went on. I do have some questions. The first, and this always seems to come up, but when we talk arbitration as an option in any collective bargaining, I understand the ability to pay, but the second item is, is it comparisons to other local employees, or is it better defined in statute? I don't know, but I hear different comments from different people.
I think an arbitrator's going to look at other local entities around, I certainly think that's what the union would come in and show as far as numbers are concerned, that's what we would show as numbers, we would show what the local economic situation is within the valley. The arbitrator's going to basically, pretty much, pick and choose. The arbitrator is going to basically pretty much pick and choose what he or she determines to be valuable and go from there, so.
So is it more geared, Jerry perhaps, is it more geared to like employees? I know that fire, police, or SEIU or others, one of past criticisms has been if a jurisdiction provides a lucrative contract, then the other similar employee groups jump on that and it kind of spirals upward. Now certainly, the recession has kind of mitigated that a little bit, but that's something, if we could get a better under, please, I should have started with the expert.
Well, I just want to be clear, I know we keep using the word arbitration, but it's not really arbitration, it's called fact finding. Police, fire, and teachers are the only ones that go to arbitration. They do last the best, which is totally different from us. So in fact finding, we're actually, I assume, is the first group to actually engage in this process. So the fact finding, yes, like you stated, is not a last and best. They basically go and what was discussed at the last bargaining session and bring that forward. And I would say to you, after talking to Mr. Keaton, and I could say based on Clark County UMC, we built a good argument in many of our stuff, and we felt very comfortable going into fact finding. And we felt comfortable with those two pieces. When you move in here, we would be very comfortable with the fact finding process, even though there are arbitrators that sit on that, and you said it correctly, and never know what these arbitrators are going to look at. I can tell you that the fact finding for us at the LVCBA didn't go well. That was our first encounter with fact finding, but since then, we've gotten better at it. So I just want to be clear for the record that it's not the arbitration like police, fire, and teachers, it's the fact finding. And it is based on what's happened here and the locals. But I would say that what's happened with LVCBA, based on the bonus and the reopeners and the last percentages of the increase they got, that will also play into the formula, which, you know, we were okay with that, because that's set in the standard. But then also looking at the other groups in, whether it be the city employees of Vegas, they take all that into consideration. But then the other side of that is, is that they'll open up all the books in the finances, you know, which you were very forthcoming with us. We didn't have no argument with you on that part, despite other groups that we deal with. So I just want to be clear on that part.
Good. Thank you, Al, for bringing clarity. The SEIU supervisory, SEIU MC, you know, on the work you did with the county, there were significant concessions, 10.7% on the supervisory units, 8.6 on the UMC. And that was part of a longer negotiation. Part of me thinks that this is a good contract, but then coming back, is this going to raise the bar? Is this where some of the concessions that were made are going to move towards? Or is there still room for the reality check? You know, whether this is too lucrative or too restrictive, I don't know yet. We have to get into some numbers. But that's the balance. And Jerry and I talked about this. It's difficult, and I think it's public perception, or even the perception versus the reality. It's difficult to, when we at the county are dealing with three, six, nine, 12, 13 different groups, all negotiating different contracts, and yet a public employee is perceived as a public employee. That's where I struggle. That's where I struggle because it would be wonderful to be consistent across the board, to be able to say, this job and this person is worth this value, and we're going to, you know, make it a good working environment. So that's one of the issues I have with this. What this does, if not a precedent setter, what this does for the next year, two years of additional negotiation is you guys are going to be 24/7 around the clock. So that's part of it. But thank you on the clarification.
But I'll add this piece too, that as you all know, especially Chris G. as well, Commissioner, that, you know, one of the things the SEIU does, you know this is 2009, we try to be flexible and not come across as people that are so selfish and greedy, you know that. And this is not something easy for some of the challenges and some of these folks that are losing their homes and trying to get insurance and go to the hospitals. It's a really tough situation. And you're right, I got Mulgrave Harris since 2009. I see my before and after here lately. But I would say to you that, you know, we're flexible, but at the same time, something we did differently here with RTC was we contacted the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Services. They offered two programs, and Chris G., Commissioner, we are going to do this, we're talking right now with Clark County HR, is that they have two programs. One of the programs was how to work in negotiations. You know, look, we do this all the time, but we felt that it's a good opportunity to go in there and see what we differently and set something different with us and management. And it worked. The other piece we're working with is, the other program they offer, which we're also looking with HR, Clark County, and UMC, is how to build better relations between labor and management. That's the other program. So to your question earlier, we are talking with the county right now to implement this, and then obviously, you want, I'm going to do this with UMC as well. But the federal mediation is, you know, a nonpartisan group. They're looking at the both parties, but they want everybody to be able to win. And the bottom line is, it's the negotiation. Did we get everything we wanted? No way, we didn't. We need that. But at the same time, we were able to walk away without being upset with you and call your names, you know, we don't do that. But, you know, we didn't walk away being mad, and we say, okay, well, let's go back table and we'll do it again. You know, and that set a different attitude. I think that's really what pushed this really well. And so based on what I've learned here, I'm going to tell you, the two commissioners on Clark County and tying with UMC, we're going to push that. And at this point, I can tell you with Mr. Hoskins, he said, I'm open, let's talk. So that's where we are.
Good.
Thank you.
And I certainly would support this new approach. It's outstanding. It's, I think Jerry called it the new paradigm. To the enhancement, the, and not only the process, I think what Jerry and the SEIU team has done as far as the merit tying it into, A, a better performance evaluation, but B, tied into the economics, I don't think it's been done before, and that's great. But if not answering today, certainly as we approach the next go-around, we need to be more specific on this $10 million number, this 3.49. Certainly handles capital improvements. The term enhanced service, we need to get better defined. I think it has to be more than we're not going to cut anything. Is it going to increase, do we anticipate X million dollar being able to expand the routes, X amount of hours? Something a little more tangible, because there's no question that I will not support this model unless there's an investment into the routes and service hours before the employee groups start to benefit off that model. There has to be a little balance there. It can't be just this enhancement. We're not going to lose anything, but the employees are going to gain. There has to be some partnership moving that way. So a little more tangible on that. The slide that has the savings over five years, I think Mayor Tobler touched on this. What does the five-year savings indicate? Savings over what? When we get to it?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mark Trousedell, Director of Finance, to come up and try to help us explain that.
That would be savings over where we are now, with our current merit and our current contract, what we pay out now. These savings were calculated over where we are now.
So, and this is important. When you say that, so where we are now, we have a COLA and a merit?
Zero COLA.
Okay. So we're starting at zero COLA and zero merit?
No, 3% merit.
Well, how could it be a savings if we're going to add a give or take 3% COLA and anywhere from a 3% to 4% merit?
The COLAs are estimated based on about 2% in this calculation, based on the CPI, the three-year average.
Currently, Mark, and this is information, I think someone mentioned, let's go back a few years. I know that one year that will help this model is really low, but not just the past few years in the recession. Let's take a look at this Western, whatever we call it, over a 20-year window to see, I think 2% may be low.
It is now, yeah.
It is today, but what do we think it's going to be in two, three, four, and five?
Right. And that's what we're estimating at about 2%.
Through the years, two, three, four, and five?
Correct.
Okay, so there's going to be at least a movement of 8% on the COLA side. And just as a reference, and Commissioner G. is well aware of this, seven of the 12 groups currently have COLA reductions or eliminated COLA or freeze COLAs. And then I understand that part with more statistical information. So the merit now, do we have that 20-year run on sales tax? Certainly not the last few years, but a better picture.
These savings estimated, that the merit will not happen, that it will be a zero merit.
Okay.
That we won't hit the 3.49% in sales tax.
And statistically, we don't think we're going to hit it in years two, three, four, and five?
Who knows? We've had two really good years. I don't know if that's going to continue on. I would doubt.
Sales tax is ticking up, there's no question. So the one, two savings is a number that could happen.
Could, exactly. These are all estimates and projections.
And that's important because that 1.2 million savings could be evaporated.
Correct.
If under this model, CPI and/or merit.
Yeah. If they were evaporated, though, the gain in sales tax revenue as far exceeds what we pay out in salary. We'd be way ahead of the game.
Salary, then we move to that enhancement.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor Tobler?
So your cost savings do include a 2% cost of living in it then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner G.
I just pulled up the NRS because I haven't looked at this in a while as well. It is only for police and fire where the arbitrator must look at the current financial ability to pay. If they find that that has come into place, then they will look at the compensation of other governmental employees, both in and out of the state. But that's not the same methodology that's charged for mediation or fact finding for the SEIU. It's solely for that, which I forgot.
And I guess from a policy perspective, even though the RTC is funded, or a lot of this is funded through the quarter cent, not the quarter cent, the sales tax, flood control is 90-something percent funded by the sales tax. So I don't want to buy into the concept because of our funding mechanism that enables us to do things different with our wage and benefit, because I think that goes against trying to build public trust into fairly compensating our public employees for the job that they do. And as much as we try to be uniform, I understand that different agencies have different funding and different number of employees, but that's what at times keeps me up at night, trying to build equity into a system that you can't. And you have to treat certain collective bargaining units differently. I don't think that's fair, but that's a reality. Let me finish by simply saying that, again, you talk about out of the box and hasn't been done before. Maybe this does set the new model for collective bargaining, at least in Southern Nevada. And I certainly hope that the county buys into this front-end process. Commissioner, Councilman, you?
I'm just going to make a couple of comments. And some of those, you know, everybody knows about my city. It's no secret, the whole country knows about my city. But some of this goes back to trust, as has been explained before. Some of it goes back to management. I have to say as a sitting council member that we had a management team and a majority of a council that kept saying things are great and didn't come to the reality of things until it become a crisis. So I understand some of those things, and I think some of the perception that the public has out there, they look at their own paychecks, and I myself, myself have taken a 45% pay cut just to keep my job. And they look at those realities of life, and yet the old, the days of working for the government, as a kid growing up, all I could hear about or listen to, my parents would talk about the benefits of working for the government, the retirement and those kind of things. We've come to a day where it's not only the benefit, but it's the salary also. And so we've changed from, benefits were great at the government, now we've got, the salaries are all high at government. And I understand all those things, and I'm excited about this, but it just, in my mind, tells me there's some people that took action when action needed to be taken, the union and management at RTC, and I appreciate that. And I need to bring that out there because that's not what happened in my city. And we're reaping those benefits. I don't have, we don't have, when they get mad, go out and we have signs posted all over the city about how crime is going to escalate and everything else. And it's comforting to sit, and I applaud the union and the management again, of what has happened here. And this goes to show you, when people are in tune with their staff and in tune with what's going on around them, good things can happen. And I just want to thank.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner June Kilani, would you offer up that motion again?
I would make a motion for the board to continue the public hearing with regard to items 63 and 64, right?
Actually, it's items 35 and 36.
Oh, 35. Boy, I had a reversal in my head. Glad you were listening, 35 and 36. Thank you. That would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for the participation there. Excellent.
And just on behalf of staff, I want to know, we will work diligently and very transparently with each of you and your entities and the public, anybody who has questions, to explore these numbers and make sure that there is an understanding of how we came to the recommendations that we came to.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As a point of clarification, do you need to hold item 36 for the next agenda item?
Actually, that was part of the motion, was to continue the hearing and bring back both matters.
Okay, we didn't hear it on this end, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, our last item is to conduct our last public comment period for citizens' participation.
Those wishing to speak to the RCT, this is your opportunity. We ask, RTC? We ask you to state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, which the signalized system up here will give you an indication. Patricia, good morning.
Good morning, this is Patricia Anderson. I'm going to make it brief, I have a few things lined up here. Actually, you have good drivers, number one. As we went through this before, you need to, don't breaking up the yards, I think it's not a good idea. They need more recovery time because simple reason, Sahara Bus is going all the way up to Red Rock, and Charleston's bus is going all the way up there too. So we really need more time with that. As far as this getting on the front and the back door, that is, to me, I'm not used to, that's not a thing. We need to have them just swipe their cards again and just go to the front door. This is number one. This is what I feel, I feel it should be. The $10 that they, the driver should have their $10 back, because they don't have any really, no lunch hour. So she put it back in their pay. This is my suggestion, because they're good drivers, they're really great. And I really need to, if they're at a bus stop or what have you, they really need to have recovery time, just to stand, you know, a couple of minutes, maybe a little few more minutes, just to breathe, because they're going, they have a lot of people here that they're loud with their music, they're coming on with all kind of crazy stuff, and it's not good. The farther fares increases concern. I know the reduced one is going up, I don't know exactly how much, I think it may be $3 or $4, I'm not even sure. But anyway, I think it should, you know, I understand you have to balance out the scale. This morning, I was on the bus coming here this morning, a dog was actually not even on a cage. And I didn't say anything, you know, I just got on the bus, like, you know, got on the bus. He sat on the seat in the back of the bus. And he was a small dog, wasn't a big dog, but regardless, he was in the cage. So. So, anyway, this is the thing, and like I said, I know you have to go back, you know, this is getting late, so I don't want to hold up any long time. You can feel free to call me at my number, it's not a problem, and all right, have a good weekend.
Good morning.
If you could choose one of the microphones.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Darrell Bell, and I brought this as a demonstration for the commission to see, this is a cart that you load your groceries, as you know, laundry or whatever, but there seems to be a rule with the RTC that the drivers, as far as I am concerned, but I have heard from many other passengers on the bus about this rule. And the rule is, if you, this is-
Ms. Bell-
Half-size, yes.
We'll get a visual on TV, but you need to speak into the mic or it won't-
Okay, I'm sorry.
The public record won't pick it up. Or, do we have the handheld up there?
Can we what? Okay. This is one of two of the carts that I carry. The other one is half the size. I fill them both when I have to do errands. Usually want the smaller one, I don't have as much. The larger one, I use the first time around the month, because of my pension and my income coming in at that time, I use this one for my heavier things. The problem is the driver's mentality about bringing these carts on and the rule that is supposed to be in the RTC guide, which states that if you want to ride, you must unload everything in your cart, fold the cart, and if you have to, hold the packages in your lap. This is causing a lot of problems, because the passengers who do not have these carts are making up their rules, saying, well, you're supposed to put them under the seat anyway. I had a driver to hold up a bus, drive, passengers had to leave the bus, he called the supervisor, the supervisor came, because none of them, when they see you with the cart, they offer you to lower the bus or to, to lower that, that platform that the wheelchairs have to roll up to. These are the only people that they really accommodate. It's like they don't feel like they need to help anyone else. And it's mostly elderly people who are carrying, or, or seniors who are carrying these carts. I moved from the northwest to here, if I could, if I can continue, I'll, I'm not going to take a roll out of your time, I just think you need to know this, okay, to the east side, where I'm always on the bus, at least two to three times a week, at Tropicana and Maryland Parkway. Now, the drivers who are coming from the airport are picking up passengers, and it's usually two, and they're usually together, who have baggages this tall, this wide, and they're on the bus. Nothing is said. Nothing is said to the, the mothers who have the strollers that have to be folded, and they carry the baby in their seats. The buses have been so crowded with walkers, with grocery carts, with baby strollers, and if there is no room, they're standing in the aisle. The, the woman is sitting down with the baby, and someone else who she doesn't even know is holding on to the cart-
Okay.
-in the middle of the aisle.
We understand your concern, and, and time is up.
Okay, I just want to make the point.
This is what I'd like to do, if you could wait after the meeting, we'll have a staff member speak to you specifically about-
Could I just make a suggestion to the commission?
If it's a important, brief suggestion, you're welcome to.
Yes, it is, very important and brief. If we could accommodate every passenger with their luggage, their carts, their walkers, their baby strollers, by modifying, enhancing an area on the bus where passengers who come on that have these things can use the airport as an example, where they have their carts that you can rent-
Okay.
-and roll them through, and then-
And we're going to have a staff member talk to you specifically about that right after the meeting, if you have just a few moments to stay after the meeting.
And this can be additional revenue also.
And we appreciate that suggestion. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the RTC this morning? Seeing no one, this meeting is adjourned. Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Mrs. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your agenda is in order and ready for approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your second item is to receive the general manager's report. And it is with mixed emotions, I share with you, that Tracy Bauer has accepted a position with the city of Henderson, with a title of Senior Director of Public Affairs, Economic and Cultural Development. It's a great opportunity for her personally and professionally. Her appointment will be considered by the Henderson City Council next week, and if approved, she'll join the city of Henderson early in August. She's been with us for six years and has helped craft a stellar reputation for our organization in terms of competency, transparency, and responsiveness. So, we are very excited for her, but we are sad for our loss, but we know that Southern Nevada as a whole will be better because of her leadership and her ability. So, we send her off with the best wishes and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani.
Tell Mr. Snow that's it now. No, but very good luck. It's our loss, but their gain, but in the long run, I think you set a standard for not, not just PIOs, but for people that embrace the openness of the general public. And I think that's been the key piece, so keep up your good work, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the name that shall not be mentioned.
[laughing]
This, I guess this city, new city manager on Henderson had something to do with this hiring. I don't know if we have the ability to do any kind of investigative work, but it's got to be a cooling off period before he comes-
Oh, that would be nice.
You make sure that this is a regional agency. He has that little city out there in the southeast, which by coincidence, I had my gavel ready, but the representative. Tracy, congratulations. Tina said it's a great, great opportunity for you, as far as what you've done in your career thus far and what this will enable you to do in the future. You've been not only a welcome addition here, you've been a great asset to the organization, and we thank you.
Thank you very much. We do thank you, and we look forward-